This March 4, 2020 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Kenny Rotner will not be here tonight, but our thoughts are with him and we look forward to him coming back in the very near future. So we're thinking about you, Kenny. In terms of the approval of the agenda, there is a sabbatical request that we need to approve, and that'll be part of Todd Allen's report. And also Dr. Morse, as part of his report, has said he will update us on this district's response to coronavirus. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Brian. All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the agenda is approved. Public comment? Oh, okay. Approval of the minutes from the 19th? Denise?
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for February 19.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Corrections?
I have one. Let's see. Page five, under ORYA meeting heading, paragraph two, last sentence, like to replace with, "Dr. Morse replied that no clarification has been sent." Period. Dan expressed concern that some community members may go to the polls on March 10 believing the misinformation to be accurate. And do you have that, Wendy?
Denise, did you see that one?
I didn't.
Okay.
Couldn't find it.
So with that correction, and others? A vote, all in favor? Six in favor, the minutes are approved with that correction. So we have announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith from Moharamit. I wanted to let you know that I had given you a few updates throughout the year, that last spring Moharamit began a committee, a logo committee, to think about redesigning or modifying the logo of our school. Our committee has finished its work, and we had a big presentation on the Friday right before February vacation at an all-school assembly to unveil our new logo. I wanted to pass out pins to you. We have our new logo and tell you a little bit about it.
Great.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, actually, if you give it to me, I'm going to send it tomorrow. I'm going down to Massway.
And I want to tell you, remind you of the process that we went through, and of course, take an opportunity to thank everybody who was involved in this process. It's a big deal, changing the logo of the Moharamit School. Everything in Moharamit, rightfully so, is steeped in tradition and the respect and the honor of the people who created that school and worked so hard to bring it to where it is. And as the school was entering its 30th year, and we had the renovation and the addition to the front of our school, community members, school staff members, parents asked if we would be taking a look at our logo. And so I put together a logo committee. Any parent who asked to be on it was allowed to be on it. We ended up having a really nice balance between parents and staff members, both new and very seasoned Moharamit staff members, parents of students all across the age spectrum at the school. We did a lot of work with the community as well. We surveyed people at our pancake breakfast last spring. We sent electronic surveys. We spoke to all the students in every classroom to get all the kids' opinions in the springtime about what was special about Moharamit, what spoke to them. We did work with the Kowasak Band of the Penikuk Abenaki Tribe, who's been helping us with a lot of the work at our school, to think about the Native American connections in the logo, whether they should be in the logo. We went through that whole process. In the fall, we had three designs that we put forth to the community for comment, not for voting, but for comment. We got some incredible feedback, positive, critical, very thoughtful comments from our community, as we've come to expect when we survey our community. We put them forward to our students again. We took all that information, and we came up with the final design that you see on your pin, the maple tree, the students reading, really representing so much of what happens in nature with our work with our sugaring, which we've just started tapping this week, and with learning. And we're really very excited about it. An additional piece to this that was so exciting was that Kathy Stetson's graphic design class at the high school last year worked with us to bring our ideas and our designs and our logos to life, and in fact, provide some of the ideas as well. And so students at the high school were actively involved in creating this logo, and a large group of students worked on it. It was led by a student named Edwin Jones, who just graduated, and he continued to work on it with us throughout the summer and throughout this year as well, even as he's going off. He's now in basic training, but before that, he was still actively working with us to bring this logo to fruition. So it was a great connection between the high school and our school. And at our all-school assembly in February, right before break, we presented this, and every student and staff member and parent who was there got a pin. It was very exciting. You can see that the logo's been changed on the website and in all the electronic places that we can do for now, and then we'll continue to make that change slowly throughout the rest of our time. It was very exciting. I do want to thank, of course, publicly, the committee of people who worked on this for well over a year. We had teachers and staff from Moharamit, Tony Lee, Joanne Chartran, Jessica Whalen, Becky Bradley, and Sherri Ficker, and we had parents, Anna McPhee, Hannah Earl, Rachel Cashman, Matt Bacon, and Maggie Matsuo. It was really an excellent group, and I can't thank them enough for the thoughtful work they did for well over a year. Enjoy your pins?
Thank you.
Thank you?
All right.
Evening. I want to thank David for giving our students an opportunity to work with Moharamit. I know the kids really enjoy it, and anytime we can do work across schools is wonderful. So I just wanted to let everybody know that our boys hockey team and girls hockey teams will be moving on to the quarterfinals. The girls game will be at the Woodmore Center Friday night. I believe it's at 6:00, but I'm going to have to double-check on the time for you. And the boys will be competing away at St. Anselm College, and that will be at 4:00 on Saturday. So we're all very excited that those teams are moving on. Basketball's continuing. Their season hasn't come to a close yet. I also would like to let everybody know about some opportunities. March 10, we will be having an event for parents and for students about preparing for college for 10th graders. And March 9, we will be having Nicole Trahune, who is our lead act at the high school. She will be talking about unpacking adolescent stress. Those two events are rescheduled from some snow events we had. So again, that's March 9 and 10, and those will be posted on the website.
Can you give the times?
I believe that they're all starting at 6:30. That's usually when counseling starts, but I need to verify that. Again, they'll all be posted on the website, and I can double-check. Thank you.
Thank you. Others from the district? No? Okay. From the board? Announcements, commendations, comments from the board? None? Okay. Moving ahead, then, Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. You should have in your packets. Wendy sent it out yesterday. I apologize it didn't get to you earlier, but vacation happened, and I left for vacation and didn't get it in Wendy's hands in time. So what you have there is a memo from the sabbatical committee. I wanted to kind of tell you about that. Sabbatical committee completed its work before vacation. As you know, over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work to revise the policy and practices and really promote the sabbatical concept, and we've had some really good luck with that. Process for sabbatical starts every fall. I do the rounds of staff meetings, telling staffs about the sabbatical process, and follow-up with emails with the packet of application materials, remind people of it. Spend a lot of time over the course of the fall, meeting with staff who are interested in considering a sabbatical, to kind of talk through what they're thinking of. This year, the deadline is January 15, and this year we had three applications, so the committee very carefully reviewed all three. And tonight, we are coming forward with the recommendation for John Bromley's half-year sabbatical proposal for the 2021 school year. John's proposal is, he wants to look into a capstone project idea for the high school. One of the things that has long percolated in the high school thinking is trying to look at how can we capture that sort of culminating experience for kids at the end of their high school experience? And so John has been one of the very active staff members throughout the years in leading those dialogues. In fact, he very actively leads some of the faculty teams around many discussions around these topics. And so his proposal is to really spend some time visiting schools that have capstones, doing research on it, forming a stakeholder group at the school with the idea that he would have a concrete proposal to bring forward to the staff for consideration, with the idea of hopefully being able to pilot something with a group of kids for the 2122 school year. He was unanimously recommended by the committee, and I would ask the board to consider that nomination for sabbatical for the 2021 school year.
So I'll go ahead. I'd like to move that we approved the nomination of John Bromley for sabbatical, and I thought it was a wonderful proposal, and I think it just has the potential for doing great things for the district and for the high school. Because, and I think what it will do, if it can move forward with something like this, is really unleash a lot of creativity in terms of the students to try these really in-depth creative projects. So I just think it's, you know, has such potential, and I'm so glad that he's doing it.
Yeah. And actually, I did include John's written proposal in your information, but actually, he also came forward and did a presentation with the committee, and that was actually, in my opinion, was even better than a written proposal. He really is a passionate guy, who really wants to do something that's very impactful for the students.
So can I have a second?
I will second that.
Thanks. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the sabbatical's approved.
Great, thank you very much. And now I would just like to introduce Maggie Morrison and Kendall Gray. They are here tonight. They've actually been here before to kind of talk to you about the work we're doing this year around sustainability, and in particular, looking at the waste stream and single-use plastics and all that. And they have a presentation for you to talk about a survey that they would like to do. Maggie and Kendall?
Good evening. Before I hand the mic over to Kendall, I just wanted to let you know that next week there will be, we're doing a waste audit at the middle school, Moharamit, and Massway. We've already done one with John's environmental science class, John Bromley's environmental science class, and the high school sustainability club. And we are going to be doing that next week, as I said, at Massway, Moharamit, and at the middle school. I want to also say that we couldn't have done this audit and can't do this audit without the incredible staff of the custodian staff. They have been so flexible, so willing to help us, and can't say enough about how helpful they have been with this process. So I'm going to hand it over to Kendall, who's going to talk to you about the surveys that she's been designing.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Kendall. I'm the sustainability intern with the district. I started back in October. I'm also a student at the University of New Hampshire. So this idea of a survey kind of evolved way back in October. We wanted to supplement the waste audit with an attitudinal behavior survey to help us understand why we're seeing the things we're seeing in the trash or recycling or compost bins. So the process, kind of how that evolved, included a lot of collaboration with different individuals from the University of New Hampshire, and working with the UNHC Survey Center, a professor in sociology, as well as the Sustainability Institute, to gain some insight into survey making, how to make it valid and reliable and fair. So we, the goal is that we'll have a tripartite survey, so be looking at the attitudes, behaviors of parents, students, faculty, and staff throughout the district. But tonight, I'm just going to mainly talk about the student side, which we need approval for, and so that is for the high school and middle school. And so most of these, it's a 15-question survey, tried to keep it as short as we could. We shortened it down about half, actually, so it went through a lot of revisions, and we conducted pilot surveys to some of the students just to solicit their feedback. So that was with John Bromley's class, actually, and they were really helpful in providing feedback on any questions that were confusing, questions that seemed kind of irrelevant, to help shorten it down, just because students' frame of attention and time, you know, is very limited. So most of the questions basically touch upon kind of what are the barriers that may be inhibiting a student's decision to sort their waste appropriately, or what are some motivations or incentives to promote their decision to take the time to read signage and sort their trash? And so the hope is that the surveys will, one, kind of identify where are the weaknesses and strengths in our waste management system, and then two, to inform decisions down the road as far as what can we do to best improve our practices, whether that's education, procedure, structural factors, and so on and so forth. I think that's, yeah, any questions or comments?
So you need a motion to approve the student surveys, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can I have that motion?
So vote.
Moved by Al, second by Denise. Okay. Are there other questions about the survey?
No, it looks really good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So we have a vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, your survey's approved. So you'll come back to us with the results, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
I should also add that actually Kendall hopes to have the results of the survey and the results of the waste audit, and you're all invited to a zero-waste dinner on April 22. It's going to be a community dinner hosted by the Sustainability Club, the Lee Sustainability Committee, the Oyster River District Sustainability Committee here in the high school. So mark your calendars, it's going to be great.
You're going to be sending out reminders, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, thanks. Is that going to be through Doris or independent?
Oh, no, Doris is like embedded.
So she'll...
No, no.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Very nice, Jim.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. Several issues tonight that I'd like to touch on. Wine, of course, is the obvious. We're less than a week away from a major vote on Tuesday. I really want to thank everybody across the district who's worked hard to put this process in motion, especially the school board with its very clear and direct support. The towns have been quite wonderful. The no-vote committee that is independent of us has been canvassing. Jay Rashad, who's not here tonight, is in his building, open, it's been open all week. He's had, you know, nominal number of visitors every night. He's told me today he's really enjoying it. You know, I had Wendy do a quick check this morning, and I do want to thank Todd and Jay and Bill in particular, on the administrative staff. Between the four of us, we've been involved in over 120 extra meetings, evenings, large meetings, living rooms, churches, one-on-ones, whatever it took. And, you know, I just couldn't have done it without the three of them, and as I said, Jay continues to do it this evening. Todd did it last night at sports night. So we're incredibly hopeful that next week we'll have great news.
Oh, I have one question about that. So that brings up, so there's still one more night, if there's anyone out there watching who still wants to do the tour. Mr. Rashad's also doing it tomorrow night, correct?
Yeah, Thursday night and Friday night and the next Monday night.
Oh, so yeah, so even Friday and Mondays, so yeah. So anybody out there watching wants to get a tour?
And you know, somebody couldn't do it on the nighttime, and they wanted to do it during the day, you know, Todd and I would pick it up. So, you know, it's, all hands are on deck, and, you know, overall, I still feel like, you know, the communities have been relatively positive to the presentations, and we've had great questions. We continue to get great questions to the webpage, some really sophisticated questions to the webpage where I couldn't just write the answer, I had to send it out to Ron and Andre. That's how technical they were getting. But, you know, every question is appreciated, and we have answered every single question that's come through. So, you know, I'm happy with that effort as well.
Do you want to get the mic done, Jim?
I'm sorry. Thank you. So continuing, I wanted to do an ORYA update. I did meet with the director and the chair of the school board, the school board, the chair of their board of directors. And in your packet is the draft letter that they are either have or are about to send out to the ORYA community related to basketball season. And, you know, if you look down to paragraph four, Matt says, "I also wanted to share a special thank you to Oyster River School District for their continued support of ORYA and its programs." And, you know, he goes on to compliment. You might recall that the initial letter that was sent out by ORYA left the impression that the school district had not been supportive of the program this winter, and nothing really could be further from the truth. They continue to use our facilities, we continue to work closely with them, as we do other organizations supporting children. I would say the difference in the meeting with Matt was having the board of director chair there. There was no, you know, animosity whatsoever. It was like, what can we do to correct the impression that was left in the community? And I said, write the letter that says, you know, we've been good partners, and we've been good partners for, you know, a generation, and we continue to be good partners. And they got that instantly. So we also went over some of the issues that Dan asked me to touch base on. They are supportive of the middle school project, and they were willing to put up a sign, but I ran out of signs in my car. So if anybody has an extra sign, they're willing to put it up. And the other issue about double-booking was very clear, that that cannot happen under any circumstances. We explained to them that we don't double-book our games. When we have to make up, we figure out how to make it up, and if they are in that situation, they're going to have to figure it out with us on how to make something up. But blocking out large blocks of time that is there in case they need it just pushes other people out of the opportunity of using our facilities. They got that, and, you know, won't be doing that in the future. They really were very conciliatory and sorry for the impression they left, and wanted to express to all of you as a board that thank you for supporting them. And they recognize the change in policy, and they will definitely be providing their spring sports numbers in time so that we can be looking at them in relation to other requests that we have. I would say the meeting was dramatically different than what Todd experienced on the phone, and I think they got the message, I think.
So, thank you. And, you know, I'm sorry this took more of your time. So I just, I only had an opportunity to read this sort of as I was trying to listen to other presentations and things, because we didn't have it in advance. But, you know, it is what it is, I suppose. But I think it's worth pointing out that the mischaracterization that they sent out in two different emails to parents and coaches essentially suggested that the district was showing some bias.
Right.
And this, I don't see, this is very general. I don't see anywhere in here where they address that their mischaracterization.
I didn't. I asked them to do that.
Okay.
I asked them to characterize correctly our partnership with them, and that's what they did.
Okay. And then, only because I was just reviewing video, just to make sure I was amending the minutes accurately, I listened to a significant portion of our discussion from the last meeting. On the point of the flex day that they had booked, which I believe was a Thursday, I went back and looked, and the analysis that I had, that had the 71 hours of accumulated booked and unused time, actually only included one Thursday. It was all Saturdays, Sundays, and Fridays. So...
When I talked to them, I specifically talked about the Saturday.
And I think we're going to probably get into this a little more later in Jim's presentation about how, I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like us to be a little more proactive in making sure that we have a solid understanding of how things are actually going, without expending a lot of resources and time
Sure.
among our staff and that sort of thing. So, again, thank you for doing this. It's unfortunate, but, you know, it's not the end of the world, we'll get through it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that they understand more than ever that the board created a serious policy that we seriously wanted here, too.
All right. And, you know, I also just want to point out, too, that I think, you know, one of my chief frustrations when I read those emails was I knew, at least to some degree, how hard Andy had worked to, you know, remediate and find solutions, and it's frankly not really his primary focus. And the fact that that process was characterized in that way, I just, I was really frustrated because he had worked so hard, so...
And I would tell you that he's met with both large groups, and they have been incredibly cooperative at the table together.
Good.
So he can, he continues to do that function. Your hope and mine is that he doesn't have to waste his time chasing after silliness.
Okay.
And I think we're getting there.
Good.
Great. So the principal search, we are in the final throes. The committee, you might recall, is made up of teachers, support staff, parents, and administrators. We completed five interviews. We are down to two finalists. One finalist is Misty, and she will be meeting and greeting the team tomorrow in a very structured format, where the other finalist is from another school system. Both she and the finalists will be having a meet and greet with administrators, a meet and greet with teachers, a meet and greet with parents, and both will be subjected to more of an informal conversation about priorities and philosophies and so forth. The idea here is to get a sense of their leader, or of a potential leader of the building in their environment where they currently work, and so that's happening. Monday morning, I'll be meeting with the interview team. These meetings are happening at 7:30 in the morning because of how full evening schedules are, and we'll be reviewing the feedback from the visits. Then Monday afternoon at 4:00, Misty will be doing a meet and greet with the community, and both candidates will have 10 to 15 minutes to talk to the community, and we'll leave about 30 minutes for the community to ask questions. So Misty's is at 4:00, and the other candidate's at 5:00. Those are community-wide meetings, and I'll send out an invite, by the way, to Brian. We should send the select board that they, they're more than welcome to come. But really, you can be a parent, you can be a citizen of Lee, you don't have to have children in the school if you want to participate in the evening meet and greet. And at the end of that evening, I'll meet again with the committee, and we'll go through the feedback from the community meet and greet. I then, along with Todd, will start doing serious reference checks. I mean, I've done some already, but, you know, we have to put time aside to do them thoroughly, and I'll have a nominee for you at the next board meeting. So I'd be glad to answer your questions. Process has been exhaustive and thorough, I can tell you that. It's been, people have been very excited to be engaged. So that's where we are.
Which of the several different group settings would be appropriate for the school board to participate in?
Good question. Do you want to participate in a Thursday or Friday? Is that what you're thinking, or the evening, or the evening community?
Well, I, yes.
All of it?
No.
Oh, okay.
But whichever one...
The evening community, absolutely, any...
Probably the Thursday or Friday, whichever is most appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That'd be great. If you, any board member who wants to participate, you know, please let me know, and we'll get you scheduled in. But the evening piece, 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock, Michael, anybody can come without making any kind of commitment, other than, I'm going to be there.
That's Monday, right?
Yep.
Okay.
But if you want to be part of a school visit, I need to know that, because I need to schedule you in. to schedule you in. Okay? Because that's not random, that's structured.
Okay.
So, any board member, if you want to do that, let me know. Brian's part of the committee, so he is already scheduled in, but if any board member wants to be scheduled into those tomorrow or Friday, let me know. Thank you. Tom and I put the final finishing touches on the draft for U N H today. So, we had included all the feedback from the board, and it was really the final language adjustments. That will be coming out in the middle of March, and we're pretty excited about having that ready to go finally. And then tomorrow, Tom, and I, this is something I just, you know, I just looked at my calendar and thought, oh. Foster's came on Tuesday and did a walkthrough with a photographer at the middle school. And the follow-through is, they're coming tomorrow to meet with me about the new middle school. So, being you and Brian being on the committee, if you want to participate in that, that's, that works for me. But if you can't, because I'm just telling you now, I certainly understand, that is scheduled for 1:00 P. M.
1:00 P. M.?
Yeah, yeah. So, they're getting ready to do a big story, obviously, if they're sending the photographer and they're coming in twice. So, I imagine it'll be a weekend.
Sorry, going back to the principal search for just one quick second.
No golden backsies.
Monday evening is, I assume that's at Mass Wade, but...
Yes. Mass Wade, Gym Azim.
No, Jim.
Absolutely. So, just make sure, and just, you know, the last thing I want to talk about, I think...
Coronavirus.
Is the coronavirus. So, let me talk to you. You have received all the community mailings. They've been, been two, but they've been extensive. And over the course of the last two days, we've been taking all of this information from the CDC and trying to translate it into actionable items within the district. So, I want to just take a moment, you know, because, you know, we're asking administrators all the time to do things that, you know, where they would normally be running their buildings. And, you know, David and Misty and Suzanne and Jay, Todd and Catherine have been invaluable in helping me get this material out. Since last Thursday, I have been inundated with emails, not from the community, but from agencies, state agencies, federal agencies, CDC, State Department, Education Department. And, you know, you're trying to filter all of this very technical information into something that is meaningful for the community. And you saw it in one of the mailings, for example, we shared with the community a comic book that they could, you know, sit with their children and go through that was designed to be a conversation piece that kids could follow. And we shared a piece in terms of recommended things that people could do at home. You know, the coronavirus has certainly taken a lot of energy. Yesterday alone, this administrative team was with me for five hours just getting this memo and other materials out. So, as you think about, you know, how much time is being committed, it's five times all of these people's time where, you know, Suzanne should have been at the high school, and Jay should have been at the middle school. But we had to have a concerted effort where everybody knew what we were doing so that when we were doing it, we were doing it consistently. So, in terms of operationalizing this for the district, I want the board to know that we've reviewed our emergency and operations manuals, that we're communicating the essentials across the district. We're encouraging, and this is, this sounds so silly, but this is like where we're at. We're encouraging everyday preventative practices. You say, well, why are we reminding people to wash their hands? It seems so fundamental. It's because it is the one thing we can do that's the most effective to prepare, to intervene in relation to this virus. So, you know, the elementary principles, washing hands is part of what they teach in an elementary school. So, I was A-OK with David and Misty because they're constantly washing hands at elementary school. But when you get into the middle school and high school, it's, they're old enough, they'll wash their hands. So, we needed to get, you know, the level of awareness across the district to a level where we were consciously providing time in the middle school and high school, encouraging the washing of hands, reminding people that that is the best thing that we can be doing. And it's not just washing it, it's scrubbing your hands, and then wiping your hands on paper towels, not on your pants or your neighbor's coat, which happens in middle schools and high schools. You know, so this sounds like really basic stuff, and it is. Where you cough, cough into your elbow. Don't cough into the person's face across from you. Sounds like, why are we writing that down? Because people do this more than they do this. So, we can get people to do that, that is a helpful thing to be doing, a preventative. Reminding students and staff to stay home if they're sick, which always helps to spread disease. And then, you know, we have other recommendations that involve operations, and Jim, Rizicky, and his staff have been all over this for two weeks. You know, Jim has met with his staff, they've upped the ante on cleaning, and the cleaning areas that are most important are those places that we touch all the time. Door knobs, flush handles, surfaces, computer keyboards, and so forth. So, Jim has been working with his staff to make sure that in the daytime, we're wiping down surfaces constantly, and in the evenings, we're wiping them down exhaustively. When we get to the buses, Lisa was already on top of it. She's cleaning with, you know, she's cleaning with the materials that Jim provides in the morning and in the afternoon. So, you know, we're doubling down on the cleaning of buses. Food service is an area where Doris, by, you know, regulation is required to keep super clean. She's even doing more cleaning in the kitchens. So, you know, just operationally, those are the things that we're doing. In terms of new practices, and these are difficult new practices, folks, because we're in a situation that the CDC and the U S State Department are now labeling countries in terms of alerts. So, Level 3, the CDC and the State Department are saying, "We're recommending you don't go to these places right now. We recommend you don't go to China. We recommend you don't go to Iran. We recommend you don't go to South Korea. We're also recommending you don't go to Italy." That has ramifications for us. I had ramifications for us. The Level 4 Lord is, "We're telling you, don't travel." Level 4 Lord means planes aren't going there anymore. And so, the issue really became, in February vacation, so all of this came on Thursday of February vacation, we had no idea where staff had been, we had no idea where students had been. So, what we discovered on the first day of return is we had children that had gone to Italy. So, now Suzanne's, and Suzanne's in the position, the school's nurses is in the position of, what do we do about that? The CDC does not give us the authority, nor does the Department of Education in New Hampshire, to say to a child, "You have to stay home." So, what we are in, in the situation of is calling parents and saying, "Look, your child was in Italy, it's a Level 3 category. We're asking you if you would take your, keep your child home for 14 days." And you can imagine, that's a big ask, you know? If you ask a high school student to stay home for 14 days, that is a lot of school time. So, again, you know, how do we deal with that? Immediately, we put together a plan to make sure these students were getting their schoolwork, and we recognize that they're getting the schoolwork, but if they do fall behind, we have to have a transition plan in place so we can catch them up. So, we have been involved in that. The other issue that impacts us going forward is we have commitments by students to go to the United Kingdom, we have commitments by students to go to Spain and France, and we have commitments by students to go to Africa. These are all international trips that have been approved, and parents have put out good money. The difficulty here is that these travel arrangements are not district-sponsored field trips. They're sponsored by a staff member through a travel agency to encourage travel by students, and it has been a wonderful opportunity for our kids. So, I have been in contact with our teacher sponsors, who, in this instance, are actually working for the travel agency, and sat with them, and Suzanne's been with me because these are high school issues. And we've talked through what kind of, where are they in terms of their own personal tension? A couple of the sponsors have been incredibly nervous. One of them has not yet gained that status because, you know, that's his nature. But we've asked them all to have parent meetings. I don't want parents to get caught short in April with no recourse for refunds if, you know, the country they go to goes to a Level 3 or a Level 4. And those are really going to be hard conversations. I mean, if you've got $2,000 committed or $3,000 committed, you are talking serious money. And some of the parents have been reaching out tentatively, kind of nervously, to the trip sponsors, saying, you know, "Are we still on, and should we still be on?" But nobody's, you know, avalanching in panic. Everybody's keeping their cool. What I suggested to the sponsors is, if you want that to maintain, you should be having conversations with these parents now, not two months from now, when there's no point of return. So, that's going on. So, you know, just, all of their materials say it's not an Oyster River-sponsored trip. It all says it's sponsored by a travel agency. But I just think due diligence on the part of our teacher sponsors on these trips requires them to sit with parents and talk through the what-ifs. So, that's going on.
Can I just have a question about that?
Sure.
So, those trips, are they all April vacation? Or the Africa one, is that a summer one? I can't remember now. Or are they all April?
April.
Yeah. So, the France and Spain trip leaves April 23rd, the Tanzania trip leaves April 25th.
Okay, so they're all April.
Yeah, and then the UK trip is May.
Oh, it's May, okay.
Yeah.
And did folks have the option to purchase trip insurance?
Yes, they're different organi, they are different companies that are leading all of those different programs. So, the insurance looks different, but all of the programs that we work with in the high school have to, we require that as one of the elements of the program that has to be offered to parents.
But I would add that, like any insurance company, they change from provider to provider.
Right.
So, these particular trips have three different providers, and the teacher sponsors have been investigating the implications of the insurance that's provided.
Is the insurance provided for everybody, or is it just offered?
It's offered as part of the trip, and the parents have to determine if they want to purchase that insurance or not.
And what we discovered is, the vast majority, but not all, purchased. The last thing I wanted to say about, well, two things I...
Just on the coronavirus thing, going back to the unfortunate circumstance of having the vacation and then all the information from the agencies, how comprehensive is our understanding of students and faculties' travel during that time? In other words, did we just, I know we sent information out, and acknowledging, you know, our limits in terms of we have no authority to keep kids home, and also that that's a major hardship. Did we, did we do a survey, or did we just sort of rely on people's self-reporting? How do we know?
We did not survey. It's all been self-reported. I mean, our families are used to traveling in the district and, you know, and the, so the parents have been self-reporting.
Okay. Is there any, was there any thought given to a more formal, straightforward ask of everyone, if you...
Not for this particular moment, but as we go forward, you know, because you remember in the February trip where we're doing the reaction, and what I'm trying to get to us is pro-action. We did a survey of the faculty, and no faculty went to a Level 3 country, so that was good. But in terms of the family, we're, right now, relying on self-reports. But once this goes out and all the other information goes out, if families are considering traveling, I think that the Level 3 connotation given to any country will stop people in their tracks.
Yeah, given that, that two-week isolation recommendation, it stands to reason that we might have some exposure that we're not aware of, but...
Absolutely. That's, absolutely, Dan. I mean, across the country.
Of course.
People have been exposed.
Right.
In New Hampshire, people have been exposed. They don't know they've been exposed because this particular virus doesn't show up until within that 14-day window. Usually, it's between five and 10 days. The 14 days, so somebody comes back, they're asymptomatic for the first part of it, they don't know they're sick.
So, just food for thought, if we, if we were able to get more information about folks who potentially did go to a Level 3, that might afford us the opportunity to more directly communicate with those families and educate?
Yeah, we've been educating them like crazy.
Well, I...
We've been sending out information like crazy.
So, no, I know we've been sending out information, but we all know that when, especially when there's an abundance of information, a lot of it doesn't get digested.
I would say, one of the nicest things I've, I agree, I'm not disagreeing with you, Dan.
Yeah.
I'm just going to say, one of the nicest pieces about the information we've been putting out is that in almost any situation, I usually end up with, you know, a good number of mad people. In this particular situation, everybody has been very appreciative of the communication, so I'm getting a pretty strong sense that people are paying attention to it. So, in that light, it's a little different. I asked my Facebook police person whether she was seeing any traffic that was negative in relation to, you know, the communications we've been putting out, and she said it's been, you know, pretty quiet. And so, I think the communications that we did before the holiday and now after the holiday have really helped people kind of get their head around it. So, that's part of the plan, is to continue, like, this memo I'm sharing with you tonight will go out tomorrow to the parents, because this, so I've shared with them how they can take care of their place, their home. Now, I'm going to share with them how we're taking care of our home. So, you know, it's, it's a continuous, you know, piece of communication, round and round.
Denise?
Well, and the reality is, it's in the United States. So, you know, not that I'm saying that, you know, I mean, obviously, there's Level 3 and Level 4s for a reason, but, you know, I think we need to prepare for the likelihood that it's...
Yeah, and that's exactly what we do.
I mean, right now, it's, you know, it's in New York City, and I mean, people travel through New York City when they're going anywhere, and they're, you know, that type of thing, so...
So, that's a good segue, Denise. So, we have in-country travel. The Journalism Club is going to New York City in two weeks. I meant, they're going to Columbia. And we have a music trip going in April, right, Suzanne? Forty kids going to New York City again, right? You know, obviously, the CDC isn't ranking our states on levels like they're doing countries. So, you know, the sponsor of the journalism trip in two weeks felt comfortable that, you know, he felt comfortable enough to take the trip with the kids. The music field trip is off-a-way, but right now, that teacher sponsor is comfortable. Again, though, we're talking about money that has been put out by parents that is sizable. So, you know, I hesitate to, as superintendents say, "We're not going to do any travel," because it hasn't risen to that level yet. I'm just, I mean, I don't mean to be, you know, state the obvious, but if a student went to Italy, was exposed to coronavirus, came to school, and then you said, "Oh, by the way, it's been to Level..." They've already exposed people in the school, so it's kind of a moot point.
Right.
The other thing is that, I mean, I hate to be, you know, to bring down the hysteria a little bit, but it's...
Oh, please do.
It's like, it's, it's, it is more virulent than the flu, but it's like, I mean... It's like, it is more virulent than the flu, but it's like, I mean, we haven't told everybody, oh, by the way, there's a large number of people in the United States that die every year from the flu, why don't you get a flu shot? So, I think, I think, you know, the caution that you've provided and the tips are about all we can do, but, you know, honestly, it's a highly contagious virus, and, you know, older people particularly, or people with underlying medical conditions, the ones that really should be the most concerned. And I would add that the average age of death in China was in the 70s, just to reinforce what you're saying, Al. The last thing I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the board for permission to do something. So, Michael, if you want to get...
Is this still coronavirus-related?
Yep.
Okay, well, first on the field trips, so who ultimately has the decision about whether the trip goes or not?
International?
Oh.
It's two answers. We control the, we, the school system, controls travel when it's not sponsored by an outside agency. So, Sean's trip to Columbia, Mark's trip to New York City, we control that. We do not control the trip to Spain and France, the United Kingdom, or Africa. That's a private company, that they control that.
And so, the decision is with the teacher sponsor, or with the travel agency, or...
Parents. The parents pull out. Like, for example, let me just talk about a specific example, Michael, because I think it'll bring it home the best. The United Kingdom Strings Program, right? So that is a co-joined trip with UNH and ORCSD Strings Program. That particular trip requires musicians that play the range of instruments to participate. If our, if the high school's parents get so nervous they pull out of it, the whole thing's over. Because the university, the design of that presentation, that musical presentation, is joint. If students at UNH pull out, high school trip's over. And that is a real dilemma, because that's the trip that parents have got $2,200 invested in. And so, that's why I want these conversations. Even though we don't control the trips, I really think it's important that the sponsors have these conversations with these parents. Because they need to be, they're the ones who will ultimately kill the trips, not us. Because they'll be saying, I don't want my kid to go. And when they say that, they're also saying, I may be out a substantial amount of money. There is a certain level of reimbursement that could happen, but that becomes the travel agency working with their insurance carrier to see whether they're willing to do that. So it becomes a really difficult conversation that we do not control, because we're not the sponsor.
I think that leaves a lot of confusion, though, because there's a lot of gray area in there of, what if 5% of the students, or 10% of the students on that trip don't go?
Exactly.
Is that, is that the travel agency's decision, then, whether the whole trip goes or not? Is that UNH's decision? Is that Ms. Van Noem's decision?
It's the individual parents' decision, who are Oyster River parents, and the individual students' decision, who are students at UNH.
So there's no point where we would say, organizationally, the trip is not happening?
We don't have any authority over it. They're not our trips.
Does anybody?
Yes.
Who is that?
The sponsoring agency can cancel the trip.
Okay, so the only, the only organization that can say, this trip is not happening wholesale?
Is the agency.
Okay.
Yep. And we make that, I mean, this particular situation is really bringing that home, but I also want to emphasize, Michael, because it is part of the question, these teacher sponsors, multiple times in writing and verbally, inform the parents that these are not Oyster River-sponsored trips. And so, the confusion always comes from the fact that they're Oyster River teachers who are sponsoring the trip. But we have made crystal clear the not Oyster River trips. So, of course, I'm like one of those parents, I should read through all this stuff, but I think the lesson learned is that for next year, as these trips come up, it's really, really important that we go over, or really inform parents about, A, what the insurance is and what it potentially covers. Because, you know, a lot, most parents there, your kid comes to you, you're like, look, I really want to go on this trip, and you're kind of like, okay, can we afford it? And you go through it, and you may not really go through the fine-toothed things of it. So I think it's really, really important, even though it is not a school-sponsored trip, since you have school staff that are sitting there pitching it to the kids, it's really important going forward that the insurance is clearly explained. Could agree more. That, do it, Michael? Okay. So, I know I'm talking a lot on this tonight, and I apologize, but I really think it's important to get it out. So then it gets to my ask. So, we had a staff member who was visiting his son in Thailand, and they did a layover in South Korea. South Korea is, right now, the hotbed. It's shifted from China to South Korea. So, we asked the staff member to stay home for the 14 days, and the staff member agreed. Here's my ask. Our hourly people don't make a lot of money, and they have to be working to make money. And they don't have the accumulated sick days that our professional staff, and if it was the para, they earn one and a quarter a month. And so, let me put this in context. In 1998, there was the ice storm that we all got hit by, that some of you lived through. My school system was closed for 11 days. I asked the school board to allow me to pay our hourly people, and they agreed. I'm asking you, when I have asked the staff member to stay home, who literally will lose their income for that time period, for permission to pay them, even though they're not working.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
My, I would not have a problem with this one person, but my worry, fear would be, is if this thing turns into this, you know, and then people, everybody has to stay home, or whatever, you know? I mean, I think we just have to think of the implications, like what you were just saying. It sounds like in that situation, you did pay all your staff, people during the ice storm, for all those days. So I, I'm not saying yes or no, but I'm just saying, we need to consider the implications, because I think if we say yes to this, it kind of implies that we're saying yes to anybody who then has to stay home because of quarantine, or whatever. So I, that's my only concern.
I think it's real, but we have budgeted for these people to be working. And in some cases, we do hire substitutes, in some cases, we don't, depending on the position. I'm worried about, I'm worried about is the staff member who can't pay their bills, can't buy the food, can't make payments, you know? It's, this is the kind of thing that I think we have to consider. And, you know, I want to put it on the table, because I think it's important, but obviously, it's a decision you guys... Okay, so let me just back up. So, is the staff member, if you asked a staff member, suppose it's like a teaching staff member that had gone sadly through South Korea, would they have to use sick days? How does that work? I would not deduct their sick days if we've asked them to go into a quarantine situation. They get paid anyway because of salary, so I'm not worried about them. But I would, I would meet with the guild and say, look, in a circumstance where I ask a staff member to stay home, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask people to use accumulated sick time when it's not something that is within their control.
Would, so, just to clarify, I think what I'm also hearing is the sick bank would also not be a legitimate tool for addressing...
Why couldn't we use a sick bank?
I don't think it's necessary. You know, the, if we're not deducting from sick time, then basically, what we're saying is, if you're home, we're covering you. Teachers, it's not an issue, because we budget for them on a salary basis. It's the support staff that I'm most worried about.
Well, I guess, I'm saying it's not an issue now, but again, I am looking forward, and if it becomes more of an issue, and more, you know, so I, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't possibly consider sick bank if it got to that.
Okay, I'm just going to kick this out, because it's different, the sick bank is intended when I'm sick and I say, I can't come into school, I use the sick bag. This one, we're saying, we don't want you to come to school. They would love to come to school, I'm sure, but we, but we're saying no, as, so I don't think that they should have to use the sick bank or their sick days for that. I don't think that's... They may never be sick in that 14-day period. You're quarantining them, because it's the incubation period that you're trying to monitor. They would be home, basically, sick or not, if they, if they, the faculty, unlike the students, we do control whether they come to work or not. So this particular person has agreed to stay home.
So, I guess I think this is reasonable, but I would like to bound it, so that as the situation evolves, we have the opportunity to revisit it. So perhaps, to bound it by saying that this arrangement doesn't go beyond the end of the current fiscal year, the current school year, or maybe some other bound, if others feel different.
I'm more than willing even to bring it to you each time I've asked somebody to go home, Michael. I mean, it can be that specific.
Well, I want us to be consistent and equitable in how we would apply it.
Exactly. I think it would be better to have it, like, when a situation arises, first of all, everyone's going to want to know if somebody, whatever, tests positive for Corona, probably going to inform people that there has been a staff member, that's an obligation. But, but I think it should come to us, and then we, you know... Let me tell you, the major concern right now across the country is people in this situation are not self-reporting, because they cannot afford not to have an income, and so they're going to work anyway. And what we're trying to do is prevent that from happening in Oyster River by going through this process. So, maybe it's too cumbersome to do it one at a time, but, you know, Michael's idea of, you know, giving me permission to do it for the remainder of the school year, might make more sense. Or, once a month, come back and talk about it.
These hourly employees, though, what, you're just talking about the hourly employees?
Yes.
What percentage of that, of the population are the hourlies versus...
How many people are we talking about?
What would it affect?
It's about 50/50, yeah.
So what's, I mean, that number?
Oh, 200, you know, bus drivers, cooks, paras, you know, but it's not going to all happen like that.
Well, I just wanted to see what exposure we'd have, the maximum exposure you'd have, you know, like, absolute worst case scenario.
Right. Absolute worst is that we could potentially have, I mean, we can't say that, we don't know where this is going. And we could potentially have, you know, mass number, maybe there's someone in the school right now that has it, we don't know, and all of a sudden, we're going to quarantine, you know, everybody that's been in contact with them, whatever.
The opposite side of that, too, is, like you said, if somebody is sick, can't afford to not stay home, they come in, it's worse than having them stay home. It's pick your poison, you know?
Right, well, I'm just saying, we have to look at the financial impact. I guess that's my, my thing, is that, you know, this isn't a big deal, it's one person, I have no issue. But, you know, we do have to look at a potentially extremely large financial impact if it grows to be, you know, big.
Why don't you do it for, like, say, a month?
Let's do it at a monthly basis. Report your response.
Love it.
Would that be workable? Okay, and then, then if it becomes, if it transforms into something different, then we may have to find another solution.
Yeah, totally.
Okay, so, so, could we make a motion to authorize you, I'll make a motion to authorize you to pay support staff who are asked to self-quarantine, with the understanding that you report to us on a monthly basis, so we can revisit it each month?
Yeah, thank you.
Is that workable?
That's great.
So, sound okay?
I'll second.
Second by Dan? Okay. Where do you vote? Is that, is it okay? All in favor? Six? Okay?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I know the employee well.
Should we talk about the eventuality of confirmed cases within the school district or within the Oyster River community at UNH, or amongst a student or staff member?
Mm-hmm. Do you want to have that conversation now, or you want to have it at the next meeting?
Are you prepared to have it now?
I can give you my first impressions of it now, because it is changing, as, you know, Denise alludes to. So, you know, we have families who've agreed to self-quarantine their children, and so far, everybody's been great. Unfortunately, the burden of that has almost fallen 100% on Suzanne and Kim at the high school. But so far, everybody's been, been good. So...
And those are precautions so far?
Those are all precautions so far. We have no confirmed cases. I, quite frankly, you know, I'll say this out loud, I was not, I was kind of surprised that the Dartmouth area was the first area, because the UNH area is just as internationally bound as, as the Dartmouth area. So I kind of expected it would hit our area, you know, about concurrently. And so far, you know, we've been good, but as Al said, we don't know. You know, there may be people out there that are carrying it, and we have no idea. So, you know, I had the question, I'll give you a couple of questions I got today, Michael, and, you know, this is where my head is at. So somebody said, at what point would you close school? I don't have the authority to close school, neither does the school board. That would have to come from the governor's office. You know, if he's decided he's going to close down the school, he's got to do it, not us. Somebody asked me, would I inform the student, would I inform the community about a, say, a case came back and it was active? We have to remember that we are dealing with minors, and so that information is nobody's business except the families. If you look at the CDC guidelines, they are still recommending quarantine, they're not mandating quarantine. And so, the state and the federal government are going to have to get a lot more directive to school systems and municipalities than they are. I would say that the CDC stuff, and Catherine and I have talked about this at length, and by the way, Catherine has been the right-hand person on this issue for me, is squishy. You know, the idea that we can ask people, but we can't tell people, that we don't have the authority to shut down schools, that comes from the governor's office. You know, so, we would, but at some point, you do have so many kids missing, or faculty missing. You know, I go back, Michael, all the way back to the HIV scares, because that's my first administrative job. And people were so irrational and so over the top, because everybody, faculty and families and students were afraid they were going to get AIDS, because nobody understood it at that point in time. And so far, what I was saying to the administrators yesterday, this doesn't feel like that. People aren't in panic mode, and they're, they understand, as Al's, I mean, at least conceptually right now, they're understanding it's, it is more lethal than the flu, but it's not, you know, causing zillions of deaths, there's deaths, but it's not out of control. I went through the H1N1 phase, and, you know, so I've gone through about three cycles of this type of health alert. And what I would say this time that's different is, we are getting a lot of information, and we're getting it fast, and that makes it hard to assimilate. But, you know, Catherine and myself and Todd have been, you know, devouring this stuff so we can make sense of it, because when it comes to us, it's very scientific, it's, you know, it's the language, and how do we communicate this to the community, and to our faculty, and to our staff, and to our students? So that, this particular memo was designed to do that. It's getting rid of all of the jargon that I sent out yesterday, and cutting to, this is what we're doing as a school system. So, that whole conversation that you would potentially like to have, and we all would have to have, is probably, hopefully, weeks or months away. And so, we got this far, now we have to plan about, you know, getting to long-term implications, the what-ifs.
Right, and I think it is, at this point, my uninformed opinion, that someday, in the not-too-distant future, there will be a case in the Oyster River community. I don't want us to be trying to figure it out then. I want us to have done some scenario planning, or some workshopping, or some, you know, paper exercise of what would we do, so that when that does happen, we're ready for it.
We are in the same place. Exactly. So we're one step ahead right now. What you're asking is, can we get 10 steps ahead? And the good news right now is, we are ahead. But we don't want to fall behind, because we know that scenario is...
And realizing that those steps will be changing constantly.
Constantly, with updated information. Did you want to add anything, Catherine?
The only addition, when we sat through a webinar yesterday, there was a state epidemiologist on the line, the deputy state epidemiologist, and then Beth Daly, who is in charge of this at the New Hampshire Division of Public Health, she has been readily available to districts. I actually called her with some questions back in January. I got a call back within, I don't know, a few hours. So our resources are them as well. If cases are coming up, they are managing that communication, they're managing... managing the communication about the Dartmouth case. Like, they are the ones that are in charge of the messaging because as you know, records in our world are protected as educational records. So they are a great resource. Everything coming directly from them is, is, um, super easy for us to interpret because they're giving us educational stuff. And then we're taking the CDC stuff and kind of aligning it. So we do have a good resource and, um, they, when we talked with them yesterday on the webinar, when they were talking to us, they were encouraging us, call us when you have a question, we will get back to you. So any community member can call them. It's anyone in the state of New Hampshire.
All right. Thank you.
That's it. That's not great news, but it's at least where we are right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we're ready for the, uh, Jim Rizicky.
Is that you? On your desktop in the middle of the?
Yeah. Um, okay, great. Um, I don't have an exhaustive PowerPoint by any nature. Um, I did a, a quick narrative of the strategic plan update, and that should be in your packet. And I intend to be brief and just talk to those points. Um, and then, um, I'll probably open up to questions after that if you have it, and then we can move on to building use. Um, goal number one for, uh, the facility strategic plan was to support the new middle school. It's, uh, wild to believe that next week we're, it's already here. It's exciting for us. Um, I personally attended all of the workshops and meetings that we had with the visioning committee and sat at the table. I take that information as needed, bring it back to appropriate staff, try to find answers. I'm pretty heavily involved when, um, an engineer or contractor, one of the architects asks for information, existing plans. Um, I've assisted the civil engineer with the site borings and test digs and coordinating that around our property. Um, I even accompanied, accompanied him up to the state offices in Concord for, um, environmental services, um, just because they have a backlog right now. I'm grateful for our civil engineer, height engineering, uh, to be proactive on that. So, um, just because we have wetlands involved around the property, he wanted to make sure that DES was understanding of the project and, uh, what we're doing. So that was fun. Um, probably the biggest support we've done was financially, the $800,000 in the capital account for the work that we've done this far paid for that. So, um, in my opinion, mission accomplished. Um, without putting the cart before the horse as far as next year's strategic plan, which I included in all these, just because we're there, upon successful vote, we plan on continuing to support that project in any way that we can. Um, both not only the new project, but also maintaining the existing structure, um, while that, um, construction phase is happening. Um, goal two was about security and, um, and other enhancements around the district. Uh, Moheramit was the big one on the list. Um, that's completed with the exception of just the concrete sitting wall outside and some miscellaneous landscaping. Don't want to leave out also that we did the same type of reinforcement in the main office over at the high school. Um, that was a success. Uh, just four items of note, um, I'm not sure if Misty mentioned last time or you guys knew, but, um, Homeland Security did another audit over, an inspection over at Maskway on the 21st of February. Uh, we believe that all went good. There's probably going to be additional recommendations from that, but, um, their goal is every three years to be in the school building. I imagine in another year, they're going to be contacting us for the other, uh, three buildings. Um, an item of note for, um, security was, um, next year, our next fiscal year in four months, um, the $100,000 that we had in the, specifically in the strategic plan for year two was not approved by the board. Uh, so that is going to be, um, an alteration to the existing strategic plan. However, um, we, a part of that $100,000 was additional security upgrades. Uh, we planned on building and reinforcing, um, uh, another set of doors over at the SAU, which was a construction project. Um, we, we may be looking at, at that again, doing maybe that in-house. We had additional cameras. We had server, um, upgrades and needs. Nothing's critical at the moment. Um, luckily, last, this year, we had some other data cabling over at the SAU. Uh, just plan on buying some, um, some cameras to be equivalent to our existing system, to at least have some, um, surveillance over at the SAU building with recording capabilities. So I'm going to be doing a small portion of that. I just want to give a plug for IT. They've been fantastic. We've been, um, the, the world of school security is, um, not just facilities, but heavy on IT and a world that I'm not too knowledgeable on. And they've been just great in, in talking about these programs and items like server storages. They've just been a huge help. Goal three had to do with, um, improving, uh, heating and cooling around the district. And, uh, just so you know, we, our goal is to maintain classrooms and offices at 72 degrees. Um, that's what we had it set at. Um, we're not perfect every time. There's fluctuations in temperatures at any time. We look at the system during the day with sun coming in and, um, AC units maybe kicking on or a student sitting close to the thermostat. Um, however, I, I feel that this year has been one of the better years, not just because of the mild winter we're having, but I think that we've addressed a lot of those old-time issues in our schools with that, have varying temperatures.
I hate to be like New England-y, but doesn't 72 seem a little warm? It's warmer than I keep in my house.
It's, uh, well, um, ash ray is a good standard in the industry for airflow, air movement and, and comfortable temperatures of spaces. Um, their suggestion is between 68 and 75. Um, and I just say that for classrooms. Um, believe me, I'll know it when a temperature dips below 70 in a classroom. Isn't that right? Really?
Oh, gosh.
Usually the call is, students are cold and they're wearing jackets. And, um, I usually say, close the window, go figure. So, uh, no, uh, in all seriousness, our larger spaces like cafeterias and gymnasiums, we have a traditionally cooler anyway. Um, we have some great staff that, um, are energy conscious as well and just say, please turn it down. So, um, it's a, we're doing well in that area. Um, already, we're starting to gather quotes for the, um, server room AC units. And again, depending on, uh, next, um, Tuesday's vote, um, with that, with the budget into effect, I want to start pulling triggers on a lot of the bids and awarding those as planned. Finally, goal four, um, I'm not sure if you noticed my, um, different wording. I put "update" as opposed of "accomplishments." Um, this is a, an item that I struggle with a little bit more personally. I, I want our grounds to look good. There's a lot that I packed in this goal, almost, um, I wouldn't say too much in my opinion, but a lot that are that sensitive to me. Um, so one is, um, was to look at the staffing level of our district and how we compare to others and, and just our, our protocols and how we maintain our buildings, our, our outside grounds. Uh, mowing is a challenge. Um, in years past, you know, we've, we've hired seasonal, um, seasonal help to mow at the elementary schools. We've tried to hire part-time grounds people. And it just, we just struggled filling those positions. Um, with the seasonal, um, folks, they've been like a, a UNH student, but, um, we struggle with them committing because there's exams and traveling and other commitments that they have. So we just need a consistent, we need consistency a little bit more than which, which I'm passionate about. So, um, currently, I'm looking at a contracting option with some local folks, um, for services. And I plan to come, um, to the board or at least share them with Sue what, um, what may make sense. I mean, if, if we could just slide over what we already have and, and, um, in labor to, um, to pay a contractor to come in with five people and get mowing done in an hour, it's almost like that's, that's a better, um, scenario for me and something I want to take, take serious. Um, so that's not fully accomplished yet. I also have, um, an irrigation plan that I've already received quotes for. This is for, I just need to have a plan, but we plan to pull the trigger in coming years. I want to get the front of the high school irrigated. And, um, we'll see what happens with the, the middle school. But I, again, I believe the outside appearance is just important as the inside. Um, visitors and people pass by this school community daily. And I think it's a good representation of what we have inside. Last but not least, I have a fleet replacement plan that I had to develop for this. Um, that included not only our grounds equipment, but also our vehicles. Um, all of our vehicles right now are, are fairly new with, and running in good condition. Um, I'd have a note, and I think one of the catalysts for this goal was to look at, um, um, additional like, um, hybrid or other utility vehicles that might be of, of interest. Personally, I, I think that, um, our maintenance personnel has, if, if we're going to, um, go forward with an electric option in our district somewhere, I would say it would be in my department. Um, just because my maintenance guys, that, they're not like buses that have a, a hundred-mile bus route. They're going to schools and back, taking care of repairs. Uh, it, it just seems that it would make more sense to maybe give it a shot. So, um, you know, there's, there's still VW, um, money or grants that may come available that I kind of want to jump on. Even though we have Ford Transits that are fuel-efficient and in good shape, I, I would probably would like to entertain maybe in the future, if a situation presented itself, you know, um, sell one of our Transits and, and see if we can acquire an electric vehicle of, uh, like a, a light duty, um, utility vehicle. Uh, I don't think technology is there yet with plow trucks and, and other heavier duty stuff, but, um, that's just my thought as it is right now. So. Um, and just a quick plug about my ground staff. Um, they do attend, um, uh, trainings regularly, whether it's at the state, um, synthetic turf, um, and attend other workshops and, and items that happen around the state, um, that deal with grounds, snow removal and safety. Um, upcoming in this, and probably maybe even next meeting or the meeting after, I'll be, um, presenting, um, a little bit more of an overall plan for our upgrades to, um, parking lot here at the high school in the tennis court area. That's all I have for our strategic plan update. If you guys have any questions.
As far as, um, when you talk about the mowing, um, is that all grounds or is that just like the, the elementary schools? Because they're so far away from?
Uh, the way that I've managed it in the past, it's better for my two full-time grounds personnel to be around the high school and middle school at all time. Um, well, it just dictates that in the schedule. As you could see on this picture, this is, this is a top-down view of our high school fields. Um, just given, um, the calculations for, for staff maintaining the amount of acreage we have, no matter what it is, the time is better spent here. Um, athletics, we, we do a lot for athletics. We're lining fields. We're, we're maintaining infield. We're, um, setting up nets. We're hanging banners. There's, there's a lot in the high school and middle school area that are keeping my, my two full-time grounds people busy all the time.
But if you're going to contract that, it's just going to be, you're just going to contract out the, the elementary schools?
Correct.
Okay.
Question.
Denise? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I happened to come across the CIP plan from last March because I was doing some cleaning. And, um, one of the things, I just wondered about the roof recoding at Moheramit that was on the 2021, that was back last March. Is that still happening?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we already wrote the bid for that. We actually had a pre-bid walkthrough over vacation. It's the best time to get people out at the schools to walk on a roof without creating a lot of, a lot of drama. So, um, again, I don't plan on, um, uh, awarding any bids with, until you guys approve it and after the budget has, has been agreed upon and voted.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, what's, um, if, if we're successful on our warrant article next week, is that, are you, did, March 11th, are you starting, getting everything ready for, okay, you got something? You got it all in the works? Are we ready to go?
Um, I think the only thing, um, I have a little bit more work to do with, um, the parking lot upgrade as far as the, the amount of CIP that carries a lot of weight. Um, we're, we have a plan. We just have to go through hoops, um, first to get it out there in the bid. Um, our intention is to, um, again, hypothetically, if the middle school goes through, is, is see if we can invite those contractors that may, um, bid on the middle school project. That might present some cost savings and, um, shared materials between both sites. So.
That, that could really, so my question, like, does the passage or non-passage of the bond affect how you proceed it with the tennis courts?
I think we're going to do it regardless. Uh, we have the money. It's needed.
And it's a priority.
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay. Want to move to usage or?
Yes, sir. So, um, what I thought would happen with building use, um, this is a sensitive topic for, I think, everyone. And I don't want to get stuck in the weeds. But my intention of this was just show you the facts of, of, of what, in, in graph form, um, what we have for requests and usage this year. The, the information that I provided in your packet was from September 1st to February 25th. I thought that would be a good picture of what we've experienced so far, um, this school year. The only thing that I have really written down to give to you and keep me on track is, I really just wanted to mention from a facilities point of view, what is working well in building use and two challenges that we're currently experiencing. And, um, a question to you as a board. So, um, but first, um, just to clarify, uh, this is a, um, a dashboard that is generated in the ML Schedules program. I did go back and pulled the same information from 2018, 19. And it shows, uh, like, for instance, the 4107 total requests. This is up from last year. Last year, in the same time period, there was 218. So it's not an absorbent amount, but we're trending up. Approved request here too, which is, is the 2980, last year was 287. Um, as far as the average events per day, which is the first, um, blue bold box, the 16.89, um, last year was 15.89. So, uh, again, if that data shows anything, is that we're trending up as far as usage.
Is this, um, data inclusive of both school district events and third-party events?
Yes, sir. Um, the next, the next slide actually quantifies that. It's actually the small one on the right where it says, um, the classification breakdown. And, um, uh, it's even smaller on my screen. But it says, uh, internal groups is 1.18. That's over 1,000 of the events from the previous page out of that 4,000 number were internal. Um, again, the numbers don't lie. From what we have in the system, nonprofit outside groups, um, dominate school usage, um, and all, across all of our buildings. Um, this is a breakdown by school. Um, some explanation here, the reason why Moheramit is so high is, um, what is it?
Growing places.
Growing places.
Yeah. Growing places has a before and after-school program. So each, it's basically four or five events per day at Moheramit because, um, they reserve like the playground separately, the cafeteria separately, as opposed to the, just one usage. They're also a pretty big active user over school vacations and, um, vacation days and teacher workshop days because they still provide a, a service to watch, um, students or kids while their parents are working.
Um, in terms of the data, an event, is there any, um, is there a variable with how much time is represented in a, in an event or?
I, I couldn't pull that particular graph that quantified that, but.
So an event is a request as you've?
Correct. So it could be eight-hour or a one-hour.
Or one-hour. Right. Okay. Thank you.
That's what this data is pulling. Same thing with Maskway. Maskway, you're like, huh, wow, is that kind of high? Well, that's, um, live and learn is, is the program over, that is using Maskway, um, quite significantly.
Uh, we have an early morning program as well, Jim, or just an afternoon?
They just have an after-school program.
So just anecdotally, I, what occurs to me is that because our new policy requires more specificity in terms of the request and the duration of time for that request, whereas the old method was sort of general.
Correct.
By default, that sort of thing. That may at least in part account for the increase.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Again, it's, you, you kind of alluded to it earlier. It's like, this is just data of what we have in the system. Our main goal is just, we got to get it in here and we got to get it as accurate as possible. And we, we are holding groups accountable. We are, that's why you'll see in other thing, other, um, slides that you'll see canceled or declined. It's like, yeah, we're canceling your event or declining your event or not allowing that, that event to, to go forward in the scheduling process until you have your. in the scheduling process until you have your ducks in a row, until you have your insurance, until you have provided accurate information as far as what your needs are for that event. I know this is kind of a busy graph, but that goes to show how many events per, I'm able to pull that data, how many events have happened per organization. And then off to the right is what space has the most amount of use. And I think that's represented on the last slide. To the right, athletic spaces are obviously the most dominated requested space. And I know I'm a little dyslexic, but I should have started off with the request heat map on the left, but it's kind of a news to me that Tuesdays and Thursdays are busy days in the district. And it has the most amount of activity district-wide.
What, like room 574, like where's that? I was.
I think, right, I think that.
Oh, five, oh, it's not.
It's room requests.
It's 574 people, okay, or requests.
Requests, right.
574 requests, okay, got it. For, but what is a room compared to a classroom? Like, would it be like a?
Well, I would say library, this space could be one, it could be a common.
That's true, yeah, okay.
It may even. I think multipurpose room might be in athletic spaces.
Yeah.
Other rooms, we could even have playground or exterior be in that room category, just to get it labeled as something. So as you could see, this, I'm just giving you data, what we have. Again, things haven't been absolutely perfect. We're getting better, I'm very positive and hopeful about that. We're still doing things on our end to refine and tighten this up on the inside.
So all of the school district athletics go through the same process?
Mostly, we, this houses, well, you look on the schedule, we do have significant events that are during the day, that are school-related, that are in it. It could be a little mundane. I wish kind of Andy was here because I was going to mention Andy has a separate athletics scheduling program called Schedule Star, which this program and that work together. So not every single practice that the basketball or JV or girls would go on this, I think that would.
Yeah, most of the things that you see on here are, would be, I believe would be games.
Okay.
So all of that, but Andy's monitors all of the athletic spaces to ensure that the team have the space that they need.
Yeah, I was surprised there weren't more of the, you know, district athletic requests, so that makes sense. So speaking of the middle school, I think we're all optimistic that we're going to get a good result on Tuesday. So that's, and I know Andy has been working on this, that's going to create a bit of a field crunch for the period of time when the project is ongoing and before the turf field could be completed. Reflecting back on the sort of, let's say somewhat, well, largely exaggerated shortage of time that we wrestled with over the winter. I think it'd be worth doing an audit of available resources relevant to parties that request our resources. And yes, we're going to, our policy says we prioritize school district programming first. In terms of managing the third-party requests beyond that, I think we should be looking at, so for example, there were some articles in Foster's, maybe, I don't know, six months to a year ago, related to some amount of time on a new field at UNH that had been somehow given to an organization that we work with. That number was not in any of the articles. What is that, right? Is it, you know, specific to a period of, part of the year? Is it a certain number of hours a week? We don't know. There are fields, I will say in Madbury, one in particular that's virtually unused. I would want to make sure that we have a comprehensive understanding of what's at the disposal of any particular party, us, and then third-parties that would be submitting requests to us. It's, I realize it's a difficult thing to sort of quantify, but when we're looking at sort of those conflicts, you know, multiple requests for the same space and time, we want to be equitable in mediating that. And I think that needs to be considered. Are you requesting, you know, our turf field because that's the one you like? While you have another one that you can use and you're choosing not to? I think that needs to be considered.
So are you saying that we should monitor requests, the availability of non-Oyster River school district land?
So I'm not saying we should monitor it. I'm saying we should assess sort of comprehensively what's available and to who.
It just seems that's complex because then you're requiring a full, you know, monitoring or assessing or whatever the verb is, of fields that are really not part of our purview.
Right.
And I just wonder if that's a reasonable thing that we should do, so.
You know, it's a factor. And some of it, there is overlap. So for example, when we did the renovation of our high school fields, we relocated the practices and events that would normally be held here to fields in Madbury and Lee.
Yeah, I can understand that, yeah.
I think I want us to have an understanding of what each of our three towns has made available and how they allocate it, right? Because I think there's some relationship between what we would use as an alternative or at least temporary resource. Does that make sense?
So that, that part of it makes really good sense in the terms of the construction. That's where you're headed, I think, yeah.
Right, because we're going into a temporary period where there's going to be a crunch.
Got it.
Okay, it's related to this temporary period, okay.
Yeah, Andy has already been talking to the towns about this very issue in terms of availability, tennis courts, for example, you know, and ball fields for baseball and so forth. So he's already started those discussions. So, you know, very clearly, the towns have been really great partners with us in the past and I have no reason to believe they won't be in the future.
And to your point, Tom, I'm not suggesting we do some sort of a survey of, let's say, fields that are not within our district. I'm just, I'm referring specifically to within the district.
I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood you.
Right, so I'm glad you asked the question because, I mean, that would be outrageous, right? How would we do that? But I think it would be a simple matter of asking each of the three towns, UNH, and anyone, any other entity we can think of that has some sort of a relationship with allocating that resource for an accounting of what's available and to who.
So so we can find replacements?
Yeah.
Okay, right. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Okay, so now we have a, we need a clarification. So, and we're just going to give you a broad example, not point out groups because it's not about the group, it's about the request. So we, the board did a comprehensive review of our facilities use policy and we recommended and you supported the idea that nonprofits would not be charged. That part we are clear on. Jim came to me and Sue and said, I'm really concerned. And, you know, he spelled out his concern, a particular nonprofit who we have a great relationship with, asked to use the high school cafeteria. Hundreds of participants in this event requiring a massive amount of manpower with the expectation that we were going to set up and tear down for them. In the past, we've been pretty clear that when nonprofits have asked us for services that are not part of our normal work routine, we would charge them for the service in terms of manpower. So overtime, for example, this particular event was, cost the district over about $340 in labor because they requested it and they wanted us to do everything. And so when Jim and Sue and I were talking, I said, you know, I'm pretty confident that the board didn't expect that the district taxpayers would be paying for the labor costs of a nonprofit who's using our facilities, but I was only pretty confident. So I wanted to come back to the board and be able to say with confidence that we are still continuing the practice of charging if the nonprofit is using services that we have to pay labor costs for. Is that the consensus of the group? Because the three of us kind of looked at each other and said, I think we need to come back and just ask for that clarification.
And as it stands, our policy and our document make, I think, pretty clear that any, any fees associated with custodial costs, kitchen setup, that sort of thing, are to be billed to the third-party.
Perfect. They're not supposed to be subsidizing the activity. That's what we wanted. Just providing the space.
The one thing I would say in fairness to these third-parties for their budgeting is that we should, at some very early stage in that process of booking, make clear to them what we anticipate that cost is.
We did.
Okay.
And they didn't open their email and so they didn't realize.
Well, we don't control that.
Exactly. So we just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page because we didn't want to get, you know, burned if we said to somebody, yeah, you owe us 325 bucks.
So this brings up a question I've been wondering about too. And I think it was, I think maybe Jim, you mentioned it in an email a while back. My sense is we haven't yet worked out the recurring custodial costs over weekends, right? Where a third-party's, numerous third-parties are sharing space. How does that work?
Oh, I actually got that worked out.
Oh, beautiful.
That's what I did over my vacation. So I took those two heavy users and we had overtime, custodial overtime and there was a, how do we charge them equitably? And we tallied up all the hours and we actually came up with a, it was on paper, by the math, a 60-40 split. One organization used it 60% of the time, other used it 40. We did the math, this is how much we incurred in overtime charges and they're going to get a bill. One's going to get 60% of that, other one's going to get 40.
So it's literally based on, the cost was this, the utilization was broken down as these percentages and then allocated as a proportion.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jim. You got one more?
Yeah, I need further clarification. I have concerns that the policy in two areas is not clear. And I need clarification on that, so I'm asking you to do that. In the policy, it does say, I think what you're alluding to about, there's a term that starts off the sentence with after regular hours, what does that mean?
I would interpret that to mean hours that would not have been scheduled for those people to work per district needs.
Not after regular school hours?
No, no.
If they're working additional hours to serve the non, to serve the outside group, whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit group, whatever it is, if they're working additional hours that you didn't need them to work as part of your normal routine.
So I can, essentially I can charge an activity during the weekday if it involves additional custodial support?
Yeah.
That would be the way I would read that.
Or weekend, either way.
Weekend is clear, it's during the week.
I mean, again, like what Michael said, if you're going above and beyond what your normal staffing is, then that should incur a charge.
Okay, because it doesn't say overtime either. And I just want to give you guys another hypothetical scenario is there's a perception in the community that our schools are free and are custodial. You guys addressed that, that they're not. Hypothetical situation, which actually turns into reality is, my custodial staff is phenomenal. They do a great job, they take a lot of pride and care in their work. We are not always full-staffed. One is, you know, we had an open position for a couple of weeks because somebody resigned. We have sicknesses and outages too. Just because we're not only doing what we, what the custodians normally do with people being down, but you throw an event or an activity on top of it that is requiring more time to take care of. And a lot of these events, if we didn't have, if the schools were closed after school and there was nobody in here, yeah, there's a greater chance we can get everything done without, without an overtime event. But events like these are creating overtime or additional time being spent dedicated to this event. So I don't know how to address that. And I don't know if you, if you guys understand that that happens quite a bit. Now, in one of my positive statements I was going to make, usually with events and activities that happen that are school-sponsored by teachers and students and coffee shops and athletics, they've been awesome with saying, hey, let's give a hand. They, there's teachers saying like, you four kids, take down those tables, you get chairs out. When we have other nonprofits come in, it's like, it's like coming into a restaurant sometimes. It's like, all right, see ya. And then we haven't even discussed the topic of waste. We're getting rid of other people's trash when there's food created. So I think that there's other layers to this. And some of our concerns is not only wear and tear of our facilities, but also wear and tear of my staff. And I feel that it gives us a little bit of leverage, it gives us accountability to outside staff, even on weekdays, to at least give some kind of a nominal charge or charge nominally for activities that we need to get taken care of. It's fair to our students, it's fair to our staff members that are going to be coming in the next morning and they expect a clean classroom or a clean space. We want to provide that.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
So if any staff hours are needed above and beyond what they're normally scheduled, those are the hours that should be charged to that organization.
And I, okay, and I can charge.
Does that sound, I mean, because if you have to bring somebody in for an extra two or three hours to clean up their mess, that's above and beyond what we do every day to take care of our schools. That shouldn't be our responsibility. That should be their responsibility.
The only thing, again, like what Michael said is, I think it just needs to be set upfront so that it's not a surprise. You know, it's, they should anticipate that there will be a custodial charge.
Okay.
I was going to say the heads-up I would do is, this is when they're booking stuff, you should say, look, we're trying to do you a favor and keep your costs down and provide these facilities. But, you know, if, you know, our first priority is to maintain the school and that's what we're going to do and if this, you know, if we find over time that it's detracting from our day-to-day business, then we're going to have to add more charges. So I think if you're upfront with people like that, hopefully they'll get the message and pick up after themselves. But, you know, I think in this case, we're going to have to revisit this clearly next year, particularly as usage is going up. If usage is going up with all these outside things, it's going to put a greater strain on your staff. And so it may not be sustainable that we can say everything is free. We're going to have to revisit the custodial charges. Can we, can we provide modified language to put it into our fee schedule? Because that's something you guys have to approve. We take the concepts that you're agreeing to tonight, look at the fee schedule, you know, talking about telling people in advance. That's what they're seeing in advance. This is the fee schedule that we can put language in that absolutely says that if you incur costs to the district, you're going to have to pay for them.
What about during the software that they go through to schedule everything? Is there any point in there where it says, I mean, is it bolded and red? I mean, could we, could we make it a little more obvious, at least so they can say, hey, I never saw it. You know what, you went by it here, you went by it here, you went by, in our final email, we, confirmation email, said it here. So it just helps us on our end saying, hey, look, the fact that you didn't read this, not my fault.
I think, I don't want to say that this is like a vortex of a problem. We pretty much localized this into really a cafeteria issue or a space like this. Regular open rooms like gyms and multipurpose rooms, they're open. And like, there's an event in there, we have to clean it anyway, but.
I guess my point, Jim, is that, I mean, I think you've made your point very clear and I think conceptually the board is in agreement. But I think the next step of this is capturing this in writing and getting Boyd approval to add it to the fee charge. So that gets to Al's issue and then it makes it crystal clear to the user. And so I think it won't take a lot of language. We could probably have a draft of that language by the next board meeting for them to see and make sure they're comfortable with it.
I also want to silence fears of my custodial staff afraid of working overtime. If they're there still at 11 o'clock at night and they're like. If they're there still at 11 o'clock at night, and they're like, "Wow, Jim's going to kill me if I put in overtime for this," I want to give them some relief on that and be like, "No, stay there and get it done. Don't worry about it. Just be honest. I want you to be safe while you're working and get the job done right."
And just because we've acknowledged all along that this is going to be a process, right? This is the first year with comprehensive changes, and then we'll revisit. Just keep in the back of your mind the option we discussed but decided not to implement, which is sort of the very nominal but consistent charge. Maybe it's an hourly $10 kind of thing. Would that in some ways mitigate and sort of balance out and spread the risk? And is that equitable? You know, that's the other piece.
Yeah, I would say that. It should be by the user, because then another user would be subsidizing somebody else's use. So, I think, Jim, capturing the actual time for a given organization is the only way to go in terms of you're trying to create fairness and equity.
Right. So, that goes to something that I asked about at the last meeting, which is, what's our capacity to, and I realize there's different systems in different buildings, but what's our capacity to monitor actual utilization? And I'm not talking about, like, watching video, or, I'm just talking about maybe, is there a, is there a log for the alarms, for example, that is, gives, would give us insight into the coming, the actual comings and goings of a particular organization? Because I know you've assigned unique key cards and...
I can pull that data, Dan, but it's only in the key end. It's waiving the badge to get access through the door. I mean, I suppose I can ask them to redo their badge as like a clock-out type thing.
Yeah, I mean, without getting ridiculous. Like, is there some way that we can, without a tremendous amount of additional time and effort, have our own accounting of what's going on outside of school district activities?
I'm struggling. I need some more time with that.
And, you know, I'm just asking the question. So, you know, if the answer isn't the alarms or something else, then is there something we could implement that wouldn't be so arduous and impactful that, but it would also give us that actual data that we ourselves are collecting or have at our disposal?
Well, ask IT. They track people.
Yeah.
So, to go back, so you're going to develop language to bring back to us to approve that would capture the kind of additional costs that some of these events incur. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't want to make it overcomplicated. We need it short and sweet and easy to understand.
Great, okay. So, that'll come back to us. We'll be ready to deal with that when we get it, then. Okay?
Sure. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I don't think we have enough time for the board's self-evaluation at this time, so I think that we could put it off, maybe to, like, the next meeting is the, we're setting up the new board, and maybe possibly the meeting after that where we could use it as a kind of self-evaluation and a kind of looking forward to kind of some of the things we might want to accomplish, you know, depending, you know.
Can I ask a favor, too? Like, you know, as we reach this point in the year, I don't know if it's dementia hitting me, but I can't even remember what happened the whole year. So, can we, can you give us the board goals again, so we can, so we can just go over them?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we will find another spot for that, maybe in two meetings.
It just would be helpful, because...
Oh, sure. It should, you know, retrospect, it should have been there, you know? Because I was trying to, I'm pretty sure I knew what they were, but I was, so we'll postpone that. So, we have the policies, Denise. I want...
Yep. So, we have the two for second read and adoption. ECAF, audio and video surveillance on school buses. And then the EEA, oh, excuse me, it's three. I thought there were only two. Oh, we just changed the name. Okay. EEA, student transportation services, and EEA, mandatory drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. I will make a motion to adopt those for second, for second read.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Dan.
And just as a comment, there was the correction made. I know there was a suggestion to add clarification around...
That got in there, right?
This was made at the last meeting, correct?
Right. So, the version that was provided electronically was the original version before the last meeting.
But then she said she corrected it.
The version that's in hard copy is the corrected version, which reflects our discussion and approval from last...
So, we get the kids on the bus and off the bus, right?
On the bus and off the bus.
On the bus and off the bus, and we're doing that correctly?
No.
Okay, got it.
That said, I would like to request one small additional change to that, which I think is within the intent enough that maybe we can still do it.
Sure.
Under the Transportation Supervisor section, in the 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph, in the added text, so this paragraph starts, "The Transportation Director will establish regulations for school vehicle riders, which will be included in each school's student slash parent handbook and handed out at the beginning of the school year." I think in an effort to reduce the amount of paper that we produce and potentially recycling and/or solid waste that we produce and that we no longer print student handbooks and hand them out, so we might want to just distribute...
That's a whole other discussion that...
Well, my point is, we don't hand out handbooks.
We don't do them now, so he's just...
If we could just change that to say distributed instead of and handed out, do you give us the flexibility there?
And distributed.
I wouldn't want anybody to come and say, "Well, you never handed me the school bus rules."
And distributed, is that, instead of and handed out?
Instead of and handed out, distributed, yeah.
Okay.
And distributed.
Except that as a...
Do I need to make a motion to that effect?
I think if we just accept that as a friendly amendment, friendly change. Okay? So, other changes? Okay, so, I'm sorry, it's moved and seconded, right?
Was it seconded?
Yes, I think Dan seconded, yeah. So, is it two policies or three?
It's three.
Okay. The three policies is a block, so all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, those are approved. Committee updates, manifest committee met, and next meeting, it'll be Dan and Denise.
Yes.
Right? Yep.
Okay.
Do we have a timeframe on our discussion of a potential alternative to the process? Or...
We don't yet. We don't yet. But I mean, we can put that as a...
We got six months.
Thanks, I appreciate it. So, can we have a public comment?
You're never going to get around to it. I want to take this opportunity to speak to you about the vote on Tuesday. At our last council meeting, Mr. Lawson commented about a discussion that he had had to Mr. Burton about the due diligence of the school board, Dr. Morris, in getting the, working on the plans for your new building. And I certainly want to commend you for it, because it's, as far as I can tell, it's probably one of the best thought-out plans I've ever seen. And I've worked on buildings for over 50 years, including a power plant. So, I, secondly, I forgot to say last time when I was here, the last thing I want to see us do is put more money into that old school to drag it on for a while, because it'll, it's just going to be lost money. And it's, we aren't going to, I don't think we're going to see 2% on interest again. The cost of the new building is going to go up if we delay, and we're just exposing ourself to financial liability. If, I hope we can keep our fingers crossed until the new building is open, but, and the work is, that has to go into it is minimal. But you could have some system failures in there that could be very expensive. As I said before, you can't tear it down fast enough to suit me, so, good luck and good luck on the vote.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. My daughter's scheduled to go to New York City and Tanzania. Got to check on that insurance.
Sure.
I'm coaching, assistant coach at Math Counts. We're going to the state finals this Saturday. See everybody on the bus at 6:40. And the last thing is, yes, I wanted to echo Maggie that we're having the Earth Day dinner in the high school. Lee Sustainability and Oyster River and a whole bunch of people having our second planning meeting tomorrow here.
Great. Thank you, Dean.
Tell your daughter not to forget to get her yellow fever shot. Tell your daughter not to forget to get her yellow fever shot.
Yes.
So, closing actions, voting next Tuesday, obviously, and then the future board meetings, as indicated. No non-public session or non-meeting, so I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Al, moved by Al, seconded by Brian. All in favor? Okay, we're adjourned.